Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy, Desmond, Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume, Chair Serna.
Here.
And we have to have a quorum.
Very good. If you could recite our statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, August 8th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14, and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and the use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda/off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda/off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file their speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the Time Matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@satcounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at (916) 874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@satcounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us here in chambers today for our Board of Supervisors meeting. We have a full agenda as usual, and again, as a friendly reminder, we certainly welcome your participation in the meeting, providing us your input if you're so inclined on any item that's on our posted and published agenda. You're also welcome to address any item that's not on our agenda. Just please be aware that the Brown Act prohibits our ability to discuss in detail any off-agenda matters, but we're certainly all ears and want to hear what you have to have to share with us. So, I look forward to hearing from members of the public on items, again, both on and off the agenda. With that, I also want to welcome Assistant Clerk of the Board Nicole Lee back at the helm of running our meetings. She did a very, very capable job when our last clerk, who is now our county clerk recorder, when she was out on sick leave for a couple months, and so it's good to see Nicole back here helping us again get through today's agenda. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item?
First item is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. Our first speaker this morning is Barbara Rann.
All right, very good. As we don't have a long list of off-agenda speakers, I'm going to take the liberty of providing a little more time, so three minutes.
I whittled it down, so it might be 2 minutes and 7 seconds. I'm not positive. Wish I had known that. Hello, I'm following up on my presentation a few weeks ago asking for people to be released from jail during business hours. In response, Eric Jones and Laura Foster reached out to me in writing stating that 100% of people released should be between hours, the business hours of 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Release records are not made public. The only way I could confirm or deny the statistics in the email was to stand in front of the jail and count people being released. Decarcerate Sacramento and I counted for 24 hours, from midnight to midnight, to collect the data you received. It's in the folder. We found 57.7% of people were released between 6:00 AM and 5:00 PM, while 42.3% were not. And while 57.7 compared to 64.3% may not feel significant, 64.3% is what the sheriff said he released during business hours, it's because the percentages don't match, and the numbers fall desperately short of Sheriff Cooper's own commitment to 100% being released during business hours. When did less than 100% become acceptable, especially when regarding the sheriffs? Also, a sign in the jail doorway states there is no set time for releases. The main jail facility releases scheduled inmates 24/7. I don't understand the stated commitment of 100% released during business hours by the sheriff and a huge sign stating release 24/7. Despite Officer Foster stating those released may access a free telephone, only 27.5% were allowed. This may seem trivial, yet we were shocked to learn how often phones, when taken from people, shocked to learn how often phones were taken from people and not returned. Particularly if the phone was a county-provided phone, the sheriff just kept them, and people were kept in a holding cell for hours and hours. I remember Supervisor Serna, you're saying, I don't, there might be a reason why people are kept and then released late. This young man was kept in a holding cell for hours and hours before being released at midnight. I talked to individuals in this situation. I let them use my phone, and I drove two of them home. Please acknowledge the data our Decarcerate Sacramento and I collected over 24 hours, and the data provided by the sheriff and officers of the county, 57.7% versus 63.4%. These are failing percentages in any organization except the Sacramento County Sheriff's and Sacramento County. The sheriff needs to stick to his own commitment of 100% during business hours. In addition, he has also committed to providing released people resource guides, bus passes, clothes closets, phone charging, phone calls, and the Exodus Project, but most people received none of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Lodgson.
Good morning, members of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. My name is Chris Lodgson, and I am the Policy Manager in the Sacramento Office of the Antirrecidivism Coalition, ARC. I've had the pleasure of meeting with staff for many of your offices so far over the past couple of weeks, and look forward to obtaining that work over the next several weeks. But I want to take a moment to highlight the critical work that our organization does supporting formerly incarcerated individuals as they rebuild their lives here in Sacramento. Our mission is to ensure that these individuals, many of whom parole into Sacramento from all across the state, have the resources and support they need to successfully reintegrate into society to thrive, to advocate for positive policy change, and importantly, a community. The population we serve faces numerous challenges, from finding stable housing and employment to accessing mental and behavioral health services and education, and we believe that with the right support, these individuals, our neighbors, can overcome these obstacles and become positive contributing members of our community. Supervisors, we look forward to continuing our collaboration with the county and working together to make meaningful improvements in the lives of those we serve. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. We are hopeful that with your support, we can continue to create positive change and build a stronger, safer, and more prosperous Sacramento County. Thank you very much.
Chris, before you leave the podium there, I thank you for your testimony, and you mentioned having the opportunity to meet with our respective staffs. I would encourage you, if you haven't already, to maybe try and get an audience with our new probation chief, Chief Rowe. I think having had a chance to kind of understand what his priorities are, I think that would be a productive meeting for both of you. If you can, or do you want to do that, I would certainly encourage it.
Absolutely. If I could just say one quickly, I want to shout out to Chief Rowe, Probation Chief Rowe. He's been at office twice already since he's been sworn in, so he's on the job.
Excellent. Good to hear. Thank you.
Our final speaker this morning is Ted S.
That would be Mr. Samara.
That would, you know, I scribbled my name. I got to keep you all guessing. I put Ted S., you know, who's that guy coming up here, right? Good morning, Supervisors. Ted Samara, Executive Director of United Public Employees, in which we represent 3,500 of your county employees. And so first of all, I want to thank those Board of Supervisors that has helped and have met with me in the last couple of weeks to move the needle in regards to getting contracts. We TA'd off on our office technical contract yesterday. It may not be the best contract, but under the circumstances that we're facing right now, it is a livable one. But however, we are, it wouldn't be remiss that we're still at the table for our 008, well, for non-supervisor bargaining unit. And I'm here today to speak on just that. These are those social workers that still work in those walking homes, and the position of the county is they want to add more duties in order for them to get a differential for working in those extremities. It should not be lost, the difference between those social workers and those that work in the field, and they're all very admirable. I believe you have Karen Parker. I don't think she's here yet, but she's up for a resolution on her retirement later on in your agenda, and advocacy she has done around the safety of the social workers and the work that they do, that those that work in the walking homes differs from those out in the field. Where if they're going to try to take a child from a home, they have law enforcement to support them. These are the children that come from those environments into these walking homes, and as you know, for those that I have met with, you know, they're troubled children, and not of their own cause, but in the environment in which they were raised. You know, we've had fingers severed, we've had fentanyl inhaled, smoke blown in our members' faces, you know, trying to talk kids off the ceilings because they're drunk on alcohol. I mean, for the longest, as you know, they couldn't even search their bags, but with the help of this board here, we've made some progress in that, as well as de-escalating their ability to de-escalate some of these children. However, it's still not perfect, and so we ask for a differential for those folks, those social workers that still work in those walking homes, even though it's admirable in regards to Director Boston and your Deputy County Exec Officer here, Ms. Cathari, in trying to get out of the walking home business. I think that's everybody's ideal situation, but it hasn't happened. All right? They shouldn't have to have to encompass more or incumbent more duties just to receive a differential for the environment in which they work under. Also, it was told to us by your chief negotiator that you, it's the Board of Supervisors that want to get workload of, get rid of the workload policy board. For you that don't know what the workload policy board is, that is a venue in which the workers in both Department of Human Assistance and DCFAS can work with management collaboratively on their workload, on those policies and procedures. But the county's chief negotiator last week made it very clear that you Board of Supervisors support in getting rid of that. That is unacceptable for us. This is a venue in which they have the opportunity to work collaboratively with their employer, the county, the department, on their workload. If it's hard to recruit and retain employees, give them still that voice in order for them to work collaboratively with their folks. I appreciate it, and thank you for the three minutes. Talk to you soon.
Thank you, Ted.
And that concludes our public comments.
All right. This is the part of the agenda that we now exercise some of the flexibility that we've kind of newly introduced in our effort to be a little more efficient with our time. So Madam Clerk, your suggestion would be then to move to appointments?
First, we just want to announce that the item number two, the presentation of the Resolution Honoring Emergency Medical Services Authority, Medical Director of the Year, Dr. Greg Ken, is being moved to the meeting of August the 19th, and then if it pleases the Board, we can proceed with own-ranks appointments this morning.
Okay, we don't have to take any formal action on the continuance, correct?
We do not.
Okay.
It was a genderized.
Okay, so we will move on to appointments. My colleagues can pull up their sheets. We'll get through our nominations here.
So we'll start with item number 44. That's the Board of Supervisors 2025 Appointments from Own-Ranks to the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Commission. And so our office this morning is looking for nomination from this board for appointment of one Board of Supervisors member to the newly established Sacramento County Behavioral Health Commission, as well as, along with the establishment of this board, we will be dissolving and removing the Mental Health Board from our own-ranks appointments.
Okay. I see that Supervisor Rodriguez is in the queue.
So I was assigned to the Mental Health Board that was dissolved three, four months ago, and I would like to continue to be on this board if possible.
On the Behavioral Health?
On the Behavioral Health Board, yes.
Any other interests from?
Need a motion to that effect?
Yes, I think we should have a motion. All right. We have a motion, and the chair will second if there's no further discussion, and we don't need to offer public testimony, correct? So we'll just-
We'll see if there's any public comment. I have not received any.
Okay, then in that case, please vote.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present. And with that, we could move to item number 45, which is the Board to Consider Nominations and Appointments. And so we will be continuing to the meeting of August 19th, the Carmichael Community Planning Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Lock Management Corporation, A.K.S. Association, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Veterans Advisory Commission, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. We will also be continuing to the meeting of September the 9th, 2025, the Adult and Aging Commission, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Casumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Elk Grove Casumnas Cemetery District, Galt Arnold Cemetery District, Human Services Coordinating Council, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. So that brings us this morning to the items which we will be looking for nominations from this board for. So we will start with the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, and there are two seats available for Supervisor Rodriguez for District 4.
Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you. For the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Desmond, there's two seats.
Please continue to September 9th.
Thank you. For the Civil Service Commission, Supervisor Desmond, there is one District 3 nomination.
Please reappoint Nick Boyce.
Thank you. For the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, there are two seats. I'll be looking for one nomination for District 3.
Please continue to September 23rd.
And one nomination from District 5. Supervisor Hume is not here, but my notes indicate that he would like to make a nomination for Jesus Mendoza.
Okay. My notes, Madam Clerk, show D4. Is that, is that a mistake?
For Cordova?
Yeah.
My notes say District 5. Would you like to continue this item?
No, I just, I'm just noting the discrepancy between what you're seeing and what I'm seeing here.
And so I will double-check that, and if there's a change, we can look back at the end of the meeting.
Good.
Ferrocks Community Planning Advisory Council, there are four seats for Supervisor Desmond, District 3.
Please nominate Rebecca Friedman for Diana Storo's seat, and continue the remainder to September 9th.
September 9th, thank you. And for the Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, District 3 Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to September 9th.
Thank you. For the Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, there are five seats. Chair Serna.
Chiefs are recommending the nomination of Tara Taylor, and continue the remainder to September 9th, please.
Thank you. For the North Highlands Community Planning Advisory Council, there are two seats, looking for a nomination from District 3 Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to September 23rd.
And one seat for Supervisor Rodriguez, District 4.
Please nominate Jasmine Alo.
Thank you. In the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, there are four seats, looking for a nomination from Supervisor Rodriguez for District 4.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Commission?
For the Orangeville Community Planning-
Oh, yeah, please. Thank you. Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you so much. And the Rio Linda Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council, there is one seat, looking for a nomination from District 4 Supervisor Rodriguez.
Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you. Okay. The Sacramento County Behavioral Health Commission. So there are four seats for each district, and so I'll just go district by district. So Supervisor Serna, District 1.
Please continue to August 19th.
Supervisor Kennedy for District 2.
Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond for District 3.
August 19th, please.
And Supervisor Rodriguez, District 4.
Also, please continue to August 19th.
And Supervisor Hume, District 5. And my notes also say that he is continuing to, I'm just not used to him not being here.
That's going to be the ultimate pregnant pause.
And so my notes say he's also continuing to August 19th. So moving on to the Sacramento County Behavioral, Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Supervisor Desmond, there's one seat for District 3.
Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you. And for the Sacramento Environmental Commission, there is one County of Sacramento appointee, Chair Serna.
Please continue to September 9th.
Thank you. And for the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, there's one District 5 nomination. My notes have Supervisor Hume requesting a continuance of that item to August 19th. For the Sylvan Cemetery District, Supervisor Rodriguez, one District 4 nomination.
Please continue to August 19th.
Thank you. And that concludes our nominations and appointments this morning. At this time, Chair Serna, it is 9:53. We can continue to our consent calendar if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Thank you. And so our consent items are items 3 through 32. I do have clerk notes for three of the items. Item number four is an adopt an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 4.36 of the Sacramento County Code relating to massage establishment owner and massage management requirements. This item, wait for reading and was continued from the meeting of July the 22nd. We do have three members of the public who are here this morning to speak to those items. Would you like to hear those now or hear the others that I have notes on?
Let's hear from the speakers.
Okay. So we will bring our speakers forward. Our first speaker this morning is BJ Pitts. And Chair Serna, would you like to go back to two minutes per person?
No, I think we stay at three.
Stay at three, okay.
Such a luxury today.
It happens rarely when we have a few, few speakers, so.
I'm BJ Pitts, CMT. My CAMTC certified number is 552. Again, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for their patience on allowing the Business Licensing and Finance Department to work through this long process of changing the ordinance and updating it. I feel that we've come to a great writing at this time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Kim Austin.
And I hope to see Serna, or no, I mean Desmond, at National Night Out tonight.
Thank you to the Department of Finance and you Board of Supervisors for working with us, massage advocates, in creating a strong massage ordinance. Thank you. Kimberly Austin, Certified Massage Therapist, 6852.
Thank you.
And our final is Tony Seokoto, CMT. Did I pronounce that right?
Hi. As you may recall, my name is Tony Seikotis. I'm a certified massage therapist, and it's very rare, what you guys have done and what your staff has done, to make an ordinance that's this strong and disrespectful of the massage profession while giving yourself tools to close businesses that are actually impostors engaging in commercial sex or human trafficking. So I deeply appreciate all of the staff members who worked on this and listened to us and pushed back and got us to rethink and went at it again, and you for giving them enough time to do all of that and make such a nice ordinance. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, and thanks to the three speakers who I believe were here at our last meeting, also offering your thanks on the same subject, so appreciate that. And there is a lot of gratitude to go around, but I certainly want to publicly thank my colleague Supervisor Desmond, who has been working on this, and due to the geography of his district, he, I think rightfully had, showed a lot of interest in making sure that this was not going to be a case of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So appreciate that, Supervisor. All right.
So the next item that I have notes on is item number eight, which is to adopt a fee ordinance amending Chapter 2.72 of the Sacramento County Code, and also amending the Department of Agriculture Waits and Measures Public Fee Schedule. This item also wait for reading and was continued from the meeting of July the 22nd. And item number 15 is to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 6.20, Title VI of the Sacramento County Code, relating to solid waste management. This item wait for reading and was continued from the meeting of July the 22nd. So that concludes my clerk notes.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does any member of the Board wish to pull any item from consent for separate vote or consideration, or-
I just have a comment on three.
On three, okay. Let's read, Madam Clerk, read item three into the record, please.
Item three is to approve the scope of work for consulting services to improve collaboration between the County and Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency.
I just want to say how excited I am that we are venturing down the path of assessing some of the processes with our housing authority. I think when I first came aboard, it was, it just seemed really overwhelming to me, and in some areas, very confusing in understanding who does what, and where does some of the responsibility lay. And so with this particular item, I'm just glad that I think it's going to give me just a summary of what SHRE has and their roles and the responsibilities, in addition to the roles and the responsibilities of the commission. So I just want to state that this is, this is a really good item for us to assess. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, seeing no other colleagues in the queue.
I will go ahead and move the consent item.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public signed to speak on the balance of consent, other than what we've already heard?
I do not.
Okay. Before we vote, please record an abstention for me on item 11.
For item 11, if it's okay, we'll take a separate vote for item 11, so we'll vote now.
Sure.
So Chair Rodriguez, do you mind just amending your motion to-
Sure.
-for items?
Sure.
And is the second of the motion good with that? All right, very good. Please vote.
So items 3 through 32 absent of item 11 is approved unanimously with those members present, and so now we'll look for-
I will go ahead and move item number 11.
Do you need to read item 11 into the record?
Yeah, we'll read item number 11. Thank you so much. That's to approve a resolution authorizing the Director of Regional Parks to execute the First Amendment to the Cortova Hills Community and Neighborhood Park Development Agreement.
Okay.
I will move approval of item number 11.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please vote.
And that item does pass with one abstention from Chair Serna.
Very good. All right. And I believe we are right on time, if I'm not mistaken.
We are good to go. So the next item is, I am at item number 33. That's the County Service Area Number 1, Zone 1, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charge for the Watt Avenue Store Quest Project, APN 2550171045.
Good morning, members of the Board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering, here to present this one. So the Watt Avenue Store Quest Project is located on the east side of Watt Avenue, approximately 250 feet south of Whitney Avenue, and consists of a four-story storage unit facility and associated site improvements. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area 1 for unincorporated county. And as a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process, and in response to that request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner on June 20th. Currently, the project consists of a single parcel in the safety light-only benefit category, and is assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category with an annual assessment of approximately $267.60. So if there are no questions from the Board, we recommend the Board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Grassick? Okay, seeing none. I will go ahead and open- will go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
We do not.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and direct the clerk to tabulate the ballots, please.
Office received one ballot. The legal owner, 3438 Watt SPLLC, parcel number 2550171045, site address 3438 Watt Avenue, Sacramento, California, 95821, and it is marked as yes.
Great. And so now I will read in the fill-ins for the resolution. In Section Two, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. Section Three, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
All right, very good. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Item Number 34 is a hearing to lean delinquent storm drainage service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drain service charges to be collected on the property tax roll. This item was continued from the meeting of June 10th.
Good morning, Chair Serna, Members of the Board. Mark Espositi, Deputy Director of Finance for Sacramento County, presenting Items 34 through 39, which contain delinquent utility charges collected by our consolidated utility billing division. We are asking the board to have these charges enrolled on the tax roll. Each customer was notified through delinquent bills and notices that these charges would be enrolled on property tax bills, and the board adopted a resolution of intent back on June 10th, 2025. Customers will still be able to pay until August 22nd, 2025, to avoid having these bills added to the tax roll. Item 34 contains delinquent, or delinquent storm drainage charges, which include 8,739 accounts totaling $706,614. Item 35 is for delinquent solid waste charges, which has 8,572 accounts totaling $4,740,639. Item 36 is delinquent storm drain charges collected on the behalf of City of Citrus Heights. This has 1,463 accounts totaling 133,839. Item 37 is delinquent storm drain charges collected on behalf of City of Rancho Cordova. This includes 1,121 accounts totaling $97,419. Item 38 is for delinquent utility user taxes, 13,196 accounts totaling $224,161. And Item 39 is delinquent water charges for the Sacramento County Water Agency. This has 2,606 accounts totaling $22,203,199. We expect these counts to go down, and this resolution or this item gives our office the authority to work with those customers. Thank you for your consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Espositi. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak.
And speaking of this matter, I'm going to look to County Counsel. Can we vote on all, this bundled group of lean delinquencies?
I was just going to chime in and ask the clerk to read them one by one, and you make a motion and vote individually.
Individually. Thank you. I'm glad I asked. All right. So everyone understands we're going to take this individual. All right, very good.
Okay. So Item Number 34, I've run into the record, so we'll look for a motion on that item.
I'll go ahead and move the item.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a motion in second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present. Item Number 35 is a hearing to lean delinquent solid waste service charges and the adoption of resolution ordering delinquent solid waste service charges be collected on the property tax roll. Item was continued from the meeting of June 10th.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Been moved in second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present. Item Number 36 is hearing to lean delinquent storms drainage service charges for the City of Citrus Heights and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage services, service charges be collected on the property tax roll, continued from the meeting of June 10th.
I'll go ahead and move the item for approval.
Second.
There's a motion in second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present. Item Number 37, hearing to lean delinquent storm drainage service charges for the City of Rancho Cordova and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll, continued from June 10th, 2025.
I'll go ahead and move the item for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Please vote.
Item passes unanimously with those members present. And the final item is Item Number 38, hearing to lean delinquent utility taxes and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility taxes be collected on the property tax roll, continued also from June the 10th.
I'll go ahead and move the item for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present.
That is some of the most exciting subject matter.
Let's see. No, actually, I think there's one more.
Did we skip one, by the way?
Item Number 39. Item, one more. Item Number 39 is a hearing to lean delinquent water use service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility water use service charges be collected on the property tax roll, continued from the meeting of June 10th, 2025. I will note that you are acting on this as the Sacramento County Water Agency.
I'll go ahead and move the item for approval.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously with those members present.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Item Number 40 is the response to 2024-2025, and I will also add for the record, there was no public comment on any of those items. And Item 40 is response to the 2024-2025 grand jury reports related to the batterer's treatment program and elder financial abuse.
Okay.
Supervisor Serna, we have Deputy County Executive Eric Jones to kick us off, and then we'll have a couple of other speakers to speak on the specific items. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Jones, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Serna, Board of Supervisors. So again, I'm Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice Agency. I'll be doing a summary of the two reports you'll be hearing about that we're bringing to you today. And I do want to thank Elisa Carvalho, who did a lot of the work behind the scenes to put all of these responses back together. So the 2024-2025 civil grand jury completed four reports, two of which require responses from the county entities. The first, which was dated May 28th of this year, is a report on the batterer's treatment program. So you'll hear from the probation department on that. That report includes eight findings and 10 recommendations. The Board of Supervisors is required to respond to all findings and recommendations, and probation's response is being recommended to be adopted as your, the board's, response. The second grand jury report, dated June 4th, is a report on the county's handling of elder and financial abuse. You will hear a brief presentation from Shelby Boston of the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. And that report includes 13 findings, 13 recommendations. Only handful, as you will see, require a Board of Supervisor's response. The Sheriff's Office and District Attorney reports were sent directly to the grand jury, and they are posted on the grand jury's website. For all of the reports, we are currently within all timelines given by the grand jury. Probation Department, Sheriff's Office, and District Attorney's responses were due within 60 days of the published report. County Board of Supervisors with DC FAS's response is due within 90 days of receiving the report. All are packaged together here, however. Sheriff's, DA, and probation, per procedure and the law, sent their responses directly to the Superior Court. For DC FAS and Board of Supervisors, we need that board approval to revise or adopt the responses as listed here and be sent back to the presiding judge through the cloak of the board. The grand jury's findings and recommendations must be publicly addressed, that's why we're here today, within specified timelines, and responses, again, are then go back to the Superior Court. There's a very strict format on our responses. So for findings by the grand jury, there are two options. One is a response to say that the respondent agrees with the finding. The other is that the respondent disagrees wholly or partially with the finding. And for recommendations, there are four different structures that can be sent back. One is that the recommendation by the grand jury has been implemented. The second option is that the recommendation has not yet been implemented but will be implemented in the future. Third, recommendation requires further analysis. And fourth, the recommendation will not be implemented. Regarding the third, where if we give a recommendation that requires further analysis, we then have six months to respond back to the grand jury. So an overall summary is that the county departments largely acknowledge the issues raised by the grand jury but are not committing to most recommendations as written. Common reasons include limited resources, time for more need, the need for more analysts, or that the plans to address the concerns will be done on different timelines. So with that, we'll have our first brief presentation, which will be by the probation department. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Jones. While we're going to have our speaker make his way to the podium, do we have any questions for Mr. Jones before we get started? Okay, good.
Good morning, Chair Serna, Members of the Board, and County Executives. My name's Mark Marquez. I'm the Assistant Chief Probation Officer for the probation department. I'm going to provide a brief summary of the grand jury's eight findings and 10 recommendations. The department is updating reporting requirements for providers by improving centralized data systems, increasing staff training and oversight, strengthening record retention policies. The probation department conducts an initial assessment on clients, including economic, education backgrounds, medical history, criminal history, and substance abuse history. Clients are linked to services such as Medi-Cal, general assistance, CalFresh, mental health, medical, and drug and alcohol treatment services. The department is working with all our BTP providers to ensure they follow evidence-based treatment models rooted in domestic violence intervention practices. This will be monitored through provider renewal process as well as program audits and data collection efforts. The department is working to identify available funding streams to help subsidize BP fees for indigent offenders. The department will initiate outreach to other counties to learn from their experience and gain knowledge of the possibility of developing a shortened BTP program model. The department is appreciative the grand jury's report and welcomes their insight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Then we will now hear from?
DC FAS, Shelby Boston.
Okay, very good. Morning, Shelby.
Good morning, Chair Serna, Members of the Board. My name is Shelby Boston. I'm the, your Director of the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. And it's my pleasure to be here this morning to go over our response to the grand jury's report as it relates to elder financial abuse in Sacramento County. As I'm sure this board is well aware, elder financial abuse is a growing trend throughout the nation, and unfortunately, we are not immune to this issue here in Sacramento County. So as was shared previously, there were three findings and three recommendations that the grand jury determined we needed to respond to. The first finding was related to inconsistencies in the data entry and how we keep track of our referrals to law enforcement as it relates to elder financial abuse. We agreed with that finding. Our second finding was related to challenges with appropriate staffing levels and seeking additional funding. We partially disagreed with this finding. We feel that we have adequate resources currently and are able to meet the needs of those complex investigations with the current master level social workers that we have in APS. The third finding was related to insufficient community outreach, and we disagreed partially with this finding because we acknowledge that we already provide a robust amount of community outreach where we specifically educate the community related to elder abuse and elder financial abuse. Moving on to the recommendations, we will not be implementing the recommendation to adopt and implement a more robust procedure for collecting data, and that was due in part to needing more time for additional analysis. We have a current software within Adult Protective Services, and we need to work with DTEC and the software provider to ensure that that software has capacity to expand and do a more robust data collection process, and that we could not achieve within a six-month window. The second recommendation, we will not be implementing because we don't believe it is warranted, and that has to do with the staffing of our master level social workers within Adult Protective Services. And then finally, on Recommendation 13, the recommendation was to enhance that community collaboration with our law enforcement partners and the District Attorney's Office, and we will not be implementing that because it was, we felt not reasonable within the timeline. I have already directed my staff to start focusing on that more enhanced collaboration with our partner agencies in this fiscal year. That concludes my response. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So at this point, Mr. CEO, who are we going to hear from?
That is the end of our speakers. Back to the board now.
All right, very good. Okay, I guess I do have a kind of a general comment. First of all, I want to thank the grand jury for their work, and this is an annual exercise that we go through. And as was explained in the preamble to, to the speakers providing our responses, I think there's, it's, the working relationship between the grand jury and the county is, there's kind of, it's kind of blessed and cursed, I would say. I think we're blessed that we have a group of willing residents of the county to give their time and energy to review important subject matter and offer their input and suggestions. But I'd say institutionally, there's a flaw in the whole structure of that because they are charged with sometimes looking at some, you know, very complicated subject matter, and they have limited time, they have limited resources to gather the information, have confidential interviews with, with folks. And county governance, especially a county of our size and an urban county as we are, there's just a lot of moving parts to what we do, whether it be in social services or public health or any number of areas of service delivery. And so I don't think anyone can reasonably expect that in a relatively brief amount of time, you're going to be able to completely understand, circumnavigate some of these complex matters to the point where it's completely understood. And I think that's oftentimes why when we have these mandatory report backs about what we plan to do with what the grand jury has offered, you hear frequently the fact that maybe we have respectful disagreements or partial disagreements, and that really, again, has to do, I think, with just kind of that fundamental disconnect in terms of the complexity of the subjects and the time that's really necessary to fully understand some of it. So it is no poor reflection on the grand jury. I certainly don't want to have anyone take my comments in that fashion. But again, for those that may be watching or for the media that may be in the room and interested in this, I would just offer those comments to kind of provide some, some broad, at least perspective from someone that's gone through this now, I think, 15 times. So again, appreciate staff's consideration of the report and the assessment of some of the suggestions and the feedback. So thank you again.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Do we have, Madam Clerk, anyone sign up to speak on the matter?
We do not, Chair.
All right. We do need to take action, though, correct? We do need to?
Can I get?
Oh, yes. Supervisor Rodriguez.
There was, I agree with you that I, this is the first time that I've actually been a part of a grand jury. And so looking at this particular topic, it was very educational. It was a good one. It did leave me with a question that It did leave me with a question that, and it was on finding seven, which is...
Supervisor, which report? There's two reports.
Oh, sorry. This is on one. Attachment one?
Okay. From the probation office?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So it was on the grand jury's probation refusal to allow online meetings under any circumstances, and it goes on. And then in the other, in the response, it was state mandates require imperson. Is that the correct, is that my understanding?
That is correct, Supervisor.
Okay. Thank you. That was mine. That was the only thing I had.
All right. Good. Thank you. Back to formal action that we have to take. Madam Clerk, I'm looking to you or County Council.
We do, we do need an approval to adopt this report.
I'll go ahead and move the recommended action.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Please vote.
That item does pass unanimously with those members present.
Very good. Thank you.
Item number 41 is PLMP 2025-0018 Liquor Labs PCM Type 21. This is a request for a letter of public convenience or necessity for the sale of alcohol with the type 21 ABC license at a property located at 2916 Watt Avenue, near the intersection of Watt Avenue and Marconi Avenue in the Arden Arcade community. The applicant is Jerem Beer Singh Delai, APN 269-0051-027.
Very good. Thank you. Morning, Leanne.
Good morning.
And I would ask Metro if you could bring up the presentation for item number 41.
So I am Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review, and the item that we are going to hear before the board today is a public convenience or necessity for a type 21 off-sale license for liquor labs. That is PLMP 2025-18. So the project site is located at 2916 Watt Avenue in the Arden Arcade community. It is currently a vacant building, and the surrounding area is a mix of residential, retail, and recreational uses. Specifically, there are apartments to the north, a Chevron gas station, and a convenience store to the south, offices to the east, and a golf course to the west. This project site was previously used as a pawn shop that was closed in 2015, and it has been vacant since. This is a request for a public convenience and/or necessity for the sale of beer, wine, and spirits with a type 21 ABC license at a future convenience store in the Light Commercial District. A PCN is required due to the over-concentration of licenses. This is the building and the floor plan the applicant has indicated where their alcohol sales will occur in this building. This is a one-mile radius map. The project is located in Census tract 6002, and in this tract, our records show that there are three establishments that have licenses to sell alcohol. These are the Rayleigh's, the Rite Aid, and the Marconi AM PM. However, within that one-mile radius, there are also a total of seven type 20 licenses and nine type 21 licenses, as well as numerous sensitive uses, including schools and daycare centers. This project did go to the Arden Arcade CPAC in May of 2025. They had no public comments, and the CPAC did end up recommending that the board issue the PCN to the applicant. So our project analysis is that this is located in the census tract 60.02. It's approximately half a square mile, and our records show that the baseline authorization is two off-sale, and there are currently three. So they are one type 20 and two type 21. I'm sorry, that is a typo on the slide. And it is over-concentrated by one license. The sheriff's district is District Four, which is the Del Paso. It is not considered a high-crime area, but we did receive a letter in June of 2025 where they did protest unless conditions were added. However, we would note that we cannot add conditions as this is a straight PCN. The applicant did end up providing a detailed justification statement that is summarized in the board letter and is also attached to it. They have indicated that this would be a public convenience to the neighborhood because it would provide customers with both food and alcohol in close proximity. It would clean up the parcel, and it would provide a use for an infill parcel. Staff's recommendation, however, is for denial because essentially the census tract is over-concentrated, and it is in the vicinity of census uses, and then that there are numerous opportunities to purchase alcohol in a one-mile radius, and that there are also sensitive uses in the area. I can answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is also here today to discuss their project. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Leanne. All right. First in the queue is Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Leanne. I appreciate it. And do you have, by any chance, I know it's not required as part of our PCN evaluation, but I think it is material to the discussion, is the on-sale locations in close proximity to this site? Because I can think of three bars off the top of my head, which are probably would be termed dive bars within a very close, in very close proximity to this site.
So there are six full-service grocery stores, two retail stores, and eight convenience stores. I don't have a list of the ones that sell on-sale in the community. We were just focusing on similar off-sale.
Okay. That's fine. I understand that. I think it's, you know, maybe in further, in future discussions about PCN issuance. And also, in terms of the, you know, we talk about the sensitive uses. We don't customarily plot those, I don't think, on our maps. And when I talk sensitive uses, I'm not just thinking parks and schools, but there are so many social services-serving facilities in that area. Do we, by any chance, have a, I'm looking at Siobhan, because I know she recently prepared a map, and I wish I had brought that today because I think it would really demonstrate that there are quite a few nearby.
So what we do try and plot is we do have a one-mile radius map, which you saw, and generally what we do is we focus on the vacant lots, daycare centers, and schools, and parks. Those are what we generally focus on, on that map. We don't specifically put all the social uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. So when I look at projects like this, you know, I try to put on, you know, my, my support of capitalism and ensuring that we support entrepreneurship and that we allow businesses to do business in Sacramento County, because it's something that I talk to quite a bit of people when it's, you know, if they want to open up a business, it's like, go for it, you know, because it is, it's good for everyone. In this particular section, in this particular area, you know, it's, it's a vacant building. It's been vacant for 10 years. I really would love to see this area revitalized, just because it will be better, the, better for the community. Rite Aid currently, right now, is that one business that is, that the license is not there, because Rite Aid is probably closed or has closed? I think they've all now closed.
Yeah, that's our, our understanding is that the Rite Aid is closed. They do have a type 21 PCM license, and we have checked with ABC to see what the status of that license is, but they didn't get back to us. But when we looked it up on the website, technically, it's still inactive, and it expires in June of 2026. So staff didn't feel like we could say with confidence the status of that license.
Right.
But to your point, they are gone.
And just to confirm, it is not considered a high-crime area?
It is not considered a high-crime area.
Okay. And I guess that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you again, Leanne, for the presentation. Do we want to hear from the applicant at this point? I assume we do. Or give them the opportunity if they want to address the board?
Hello, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for giving us the time to speak today. Just a little bit of background, we work in, I work in real estate. We own restaurants in the area. This is not our first convenience store of 7-Elevens. We've done this same project in the, in Placer County in Roseville.
I'm sorry. Can we get your name for the record, please?
Sir Pierre Randawa.
Thank you.
The license is actually under my nephew, which is Jerem. So this is going to be a family project. The license in that area, like we said, is not high-crime. My understanding when we initially did the ABC paperwork is that there were a base of three licenses, and this would be the fourth. And, and as we discussed, the Rite Aid is permanently closed. I'm not sure. We weren't made aware of this until just Friday, so we haven't had the time to meet with ABC to go over that information. But the building that we've already signed a lease into, it has been vacant for 10 years. It's run by homeless people. The area, that, that building is extremely rundown. We had a liquor store in Placer County. We did the same thing. It was off of Riverside Avenue. We went in there, very old building, went and remodeled it, brought access to fresh food, packaged food, beverages nearby, but really just cleaned the entire building up. We also installed surveillance systems and gave sheriff access to those as well.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Supervisor Rodriguez.
Do you have a projected percent of that alcohol we'll have in your convenience store?
Somewhere around 40 to, 40 to 50.
Percent projected force of sales?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wish to speak?
I do not have anyone, sir.
All right. Very good. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question for staff in terms of the type 21 license from the Rite Aid. Now that, they can, they can sell that license. Tell me what the process is for maintaining that license in the area.
So they can either cancel it, get rid of it entirely, and then, I'm not quite sure exactly what would happen, but there is also the possibility that they could sell it. And my understanding is when they sell, it doesn't necessarily have to stay in the census tract, and that's why we reached out to ABC to see if there had been any contact with Rite Aid, or to see if they had any idea what the status of those licenses was, and they have not gotten back to us.
Okay. So I, when these PCNs come to us, I, I struggle with these a lot, as I know a lot of my colleagues do as well, and appreciate the statements from Supervisor Rodriguez. I can tell you, as a supervisor that represents the area, I also want to see the area developed and spend an awful lot of time in that area, and I'm extremely familiar with it. I'm, I'm very surprised that that census tract is not designated as a high-crime area, but I think you mentioned the one-mile radius around it is. I had a discussion with the North Division Sheriff's Commander about that area and immediately surrounding it. There have been a series of shootings in that area in the past few years. Anecdotally, I could tell you that every member of that community would say that is a high-crime area. I also...
I just wonder if that has to do with the fact that Del Paso country...
I wonder if it could skew, you know, some of the data. I was thinking the same thing, actually. And the other thing that I really struggle with there is, and I also appreciate Supervisor Rodriguez's comments about a vacant building. And, you know, I served on the CPAC like some of, some of us did, and there was often a discussion, hey, let's not let, let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and something is better than nothing. I don't think that's the case here at this location with this use. I, I think that, you know, the burden is on the applicant to establish that there is substantial justification for convenience and necessity to have this there. I don't think that's the case. I think there are many alcohol-serving establishments, both off-sale and on-premises. There are locations for, for food at the Rayleigh's right there. And I also bring in, you know, I mentioned in my comments earlier that, you know, the county is putting a lot of social services along that Watt Avenue corridor, which I support. But part of that support, and I've mentioned this many times from the, from the dais, is that, look, we have to keep faith with the community that we are going to make decisions that are, are going to ensure that these, the social services community, whether that's serving the homelessness, whether that's a Medi-Cal facility, or whatever it is, these are not going to be combined with, with other uses or decisions that could potentially negatively impact the community. And I feel like this could. And I also want to keep in mind that this is right next to, just north of the Country Club, where the Old Tire Records used to be, and it's still the Country Club lanes right there, which is right next to Country Club Plaza, Country Club Center, where we heard some members of the public come the other day. This is a very challenged area, and I think allowing a type 21 use here is not going to be, will not be good for the community. I don't think there's a public convenience or necessity for it. And with that, I support staff's recommendation to deny the PCN.
Okay. There's a, that's a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion. Supervisor, motion and second, Supervisor Rodriguez.
Oh, yes. I just had a question. I had one more question. So...
Floor's yours.
Okay. I want to go back to, I want to go back to the census tracts, and it was a question that I asked yesterday, and I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to look at it. So other census tracts similar to this within the county, do we, do we have, how many of those would exceed the alcohol licenses 21? Do we have information on that?
I don't think we specifically know how many are, are over-concentrated if somebody came in for another one. Basically, what, what staff does is, in the process, is that the applicant would go to ABC, and ABC would tell them that they're over-concentrated, and then they apply for the PCN with us. We're not exactly proactive in tracking that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
I just have a question about the motion. A yes supports staff's recommendation and no opposes. Is that how sometimes these get?
That's correct. And staff's recommendation is to deny. So that's, this is a motion to affirm the denial.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion second. Please vote.
Just want to confirm that second is from you, Supervisor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy? Okay.
Kennedy.
Thank you. And that item does pass. Three votes with a no vote from Supervisor Rodriguez.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item number 42 is PLMP 2022-00144, Shandon 13. This is a specific plan amendment, rezone, small alternative subdivision map and design review for a property located south of Floran Road and 0.6 miles east of Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community. The applicant is Rick Langdon, APN 066-0100-0006. I will need to swear in all parties present, so if you wish to address the board regarding item number 42 on this agenda, please stand to be sworn this morning and raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you, now, I would give you the instructions that when you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Chair Serna, board members. I'm Emma Patton, Senior Planner, and today I'm joined by Christopher Albert, Associate Planner and Project Manager for the Shandon 13 Project. Today, I'll be presenting the Shandon 13 Project, covering aspects of the project, including the location and context, the requested entitlements, environmental review, as well as our staff analysis and recommendation. The Shandon 13 Project is located within the North Vineyard Station specific plan shown here, outlined in red. It's that Project 22. It is one of four projects located east of Bradshaw and directly south of Floran Road. Each of those projects is in various stages of development. The applicant is requesting approval of a specific plan amendment to increase the residential density. I'll discuss this a bit more on the next slide. They also request a rezone of approximately 41 acres from agricultural 20 to residential density 5. A small alternative subdivision map to divide the 41 acres into 159 single-family residential lots, one park lot, one bioretention basin lot, and three landscape lots, as well as a design review to determine substantial compliance with the county-wide design guidelines. Here is that specific plan amendment I promised. The amendment would change the land use designation from single-family residential 1 through 3, allowing a density of three dwelling units per acre, to single-family residential 3 through 5, allowing up to five dwelling units per acre. to Single Family Residential 3 through 5, allowing up to five dwelling units per acre. It also includes a realignment of planned roadways within the specific plan to improve site circulation and land use efficiency. A notable co-benefit of the new layout is an increase in the park size, supporting broader community recreation needs. The proposed map shows here includes those 159 single-family residential lots I mentioned. On the southern portion of that map, which is shown on the right side here, you see the public park, the bioretention basin. There's also landscaping along some of those major roadways, including Florin Roadway along the north. The layout is designed to maximize connectivity with adjacent developments, including developments to the west where a school site is planned, and provide ample open space for residents. I will note, under the Quimby Act, the required parkland dedication is 2.4 acres. The applicant proposes to dedicate an eight-acre park site, resulting in an overdedication of approximately 5.6 acres. This overdedication will help meet the park needs in nearby higher-density residential developments south of Florin Road. The project qualifies for a notice of exemption under SEQA Section 15182A based on conformity with the adopted specific plan. Project-specific mitigation measures have been developed to address impacts identified in the specific plan's environmental impact report. In regards to advisory recommendations, the Vineyard CPAC met on September 12, 2024. While no quorum was available, the two members present did express their support for the proposed project. The Design Review Advisory Committee also met later on June 13, 2024, and found it consistent with the county-wide design guidelines. Staff reviewed the project and found it to be consistent with the general plan and the North Vineyard Station specific plan, found it to be compatible with planned development densities in the area, and found that it is meeting the specific plan infrastructure requirements, including road and drainage improvements. Finally, the project was supported by both the CPAC and the DRAQ. So based on this analysis, staff is recommending approval of the project, including that the board recognize the project's exempt status under SEQA Section 15182A, approve the resolution amending the North Vineyard Station specific plan, adopt the ordinance authorizing a rezone of approximately 41 acres, approve the small alternative subdivision map, subject to findings and conditions, find the project in substantial compliance with the county-wide design guidelines, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have. And as seen earlier, the applicant is in attendance should he have questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. So I always get a little apprehensive when we have items, planning items, that come before us. And if those planning items are in a particular supervisory district, the likes of which is not seated up here at the moment. So I'm just going to ask the clerk, do we have any special instructions or comments from Supervisor Hume?
I did not receive anything.
For items 42 and 43?
I did not receive anything from the office.
And planning staff, are you aware of any concerns, any?
No specific concerns. I do recall during briefings, there were some questions relative to parks and the overdedication, which I mentioned during the presentation.
Okay, very good. All right.
Supervisor Serna?
Yes.
I'll just add, I did text Supervisor Hume, and he says he's on his way. So I'd guess about 10 minutes out, just to put that in for information for you.
Okay. I think as a courtesy, I think it would be appropriate for us to maybe, and I'd actually like to have him here to be able to hear the speakers who have been sworn and are expected to testify. I would like us to go into recess for, let's say, 15 minutes. Give him that opportunity. If he's not back, by then, we'll just proceed. But I think we owe it to him to give him a chance to be here to certainly participate and consider these items that are in his district. So with that, we are in recess. Maybe it's a case of being too-- Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, August 5, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish the quorum?
Thank you. Supervisors Kennedy, Desmond, Rodriguez?
Here.
Hume?
I am here.
You are here.
All right, very good.
I'm just sorry, we have a quorum.
We have the full contingent of the board here, so very good.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, no. My pleasure. So we will now hear from public speakers on the item. Les, Supervisor Hume, do you have any introductory remarks or questions of staff? You missed the staff report, but--
I was briefed ahead of the meeting. I was listening to the staff presentation on my drive here, so I am up to speed and good. Thank you very much. I appreciate the--
We can actually participate while in motion, so.
Actually, if going to page 47 under Table 3.
All right, very good. Okay, so we will go ahead and hear from public speakers?
We do not have any public comment, but I do believe are the applicants here today?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Good morning. My name is Rick Langdon. I represent the owner of this property. And I really don't have much to add to the presentation. I think Emma did a good job, and I'd like to thank Emma and Christopher for their help putting this project together. But I would answer any questions you may have regarding the project.
All right, very good. Succinct, I like it. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. And that concludes public speakers, right?
We do not have any other public comments.
Okay, then at this point, entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll just say that I appreciate the applicant's willingness to increase the park area due to the number of units within the specific plan. And I imagine that the original purpose of the 1 to 3 designation was for a density feathering. That's a pretty land-intensive, land-use that is not necessarily appropriate or adequate when we're facing a housing shortage, so I would happily move approval of the item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
All right, very good. Next item, please.
Item number 43 is PLMP 2023-00054, Vang Property Rezone and Parcel Map. This is a rezone tentative parcel map and design review for two lots located northeast of the intersection of Dillard Road and Sherman Lane in the Kasumnas community. The applicant is the Vang family, APN 134-0333-011 and -025. I do need to administer an oath for those members that would like to present, if you would like to address the board about item number 43 on this agenda, please stand to be sworn. And if you could all please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
You're back.
I'm back. Good morning, board members. I'm Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review. I would like to report that the applicant, represented by Mr. Holloway, has requested a continuance for this item. And staff would like to request that if the board does continue us, that you can send you it to the September 9 hearing date to give us ample time to address and work with the applicant.
Okay, very good. I suspect, Mr. Holloway, you don't have anything to add. Okay, very good. All right. And we have no public speakers on the item?
We do not for this item.
All right, then I'd entertain a motion to continue. Supervisor Hume?
I would make that motion to continue to, what was the date again?
September 9, please.
September the 9th meeting.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in a second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
All right, very good. Thank you.
That brings us to item number 46. That is County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Nicole. Supervisor, I just wanted to take a moment to highlight one of the services. I believe Metro Cable has a picture to show for you. I just wanted to highlight some of the activities that we have in Department of Human Assistance under the Director Ethan Dye. Our Office of Veteran Services plays such a vital role in ensuring that veterans and their families can access benefits they've earned through their service, their military service. One example is Elise Alert, pictured here, who has-- And we owe a thanks to our office for their guidance, securing educational benefits to fully cover her tuition and provide stipends for her as she went to school at UC Davis. These resources gave Elise the financial freedom to focus on matters her academic, her internship, and real-world experiences of unpaid roles at her university. Her hard work and dedication paid off, as she was honored with an outstanding senior award and the department's Citation of Academic Distinction. But behind the scenes is a great employee of ours, Rochelle Arnold, who is our fantastic Veteran Services Officer, and her dedicated team. They work every day with compassion and purpose, knowing that they can change the lives and make life-changing assistance to veterans. Elise's story is the reason why we work and what we work for every day. The Office of Veterans Affairs is committed to making sure every veteran and their family members have the support and resources that they deserve. And that's how we honor their service, their military service, by showing up every day and providing services to them. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Director Dye, Rochelle, and her dedicated team of the Veteran Service Office for all the wonderful work she does, and her commitment to the veterans. She's a veteran herself and incredibly committed to helping veterans seek out all the variety of services that are due to them. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Appreciate those comments. Supervisor Rodriguez, we are now on to supervisor comments. We'll start with District 4 Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair. I want to congratulate the Fat Rabbit for being honored for excellence in health and safety. I'm excited to highlight the Fat Rabbit for earning the Environmental Management Department's Annual Award of Excellence. Running a restaurant is tough, and earning the kind of recognition doesn't happen by accident. It takes a team, and all in all, just to carry out the day-by-day. From food safety to environmental practices, the Fat Rabbit continues to lead by example to set the standard high. So we're lucky to have them in the city of Bolsom in Sacramento County, and congratulations on this award. I also want to recognize Diane Rogers, a 2025 Women Who Mean Business honoree for the real and lasting impact she's made across the Sacramento region. She's helped shift the role of chambers from ceremonial to strategic, focusing on supporting businesses in practical and meaningful ways. And lastly, tonight is National Night Out, and it's just a reminder of the strength that comes from neighbors coming together with a shared commitment to safety and community. I want to thank all the organizers and volunteers and community members who make these events possible and extend my deep appreciation to our law enforcement officers for showing up, not just in uniform, but in partnership with the communities they serve. That's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've not heard the term "fat rabbit" in a while.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Since I was in high school, because I was surprisingly quick for a big offensive lineman, but--
Nimble, nimble as you are.
A few things. One, there was an inordinate amount of public comments related to debris on the roadways, dead trees, DOT infrastructure, and not surprisingly, most of those locations are in District 3, which we will be following up on with my staff. But something that does come up a lot is concerns and complaints about 311. I've had discussions, I think, with Deputy County Exec Eric Jones about this, particularly with respect to parking. If you call 311, try to go through 311, it doesn't easily get transferred over to the Sheriff's Department, and it kind of gets bounced back. So I want to see if we, maybe we could look into that again and see if we can make that more seamless for members of the public who rely on 311 to report illegal parking concerns.
Yes, sir.
And the final thing I just want to bring up is David and I had a discussion about this yesterday, and we've had a few discussions back during the budget. We had, one of the sheriff's requests was relating to an IT chief position in the Sheriff's Department. We didn't get into a discussion about this much during budget, and I've been told discussions have been ongoing, but we haven't been able to resolve this. I just want to go on record and say I support this and hope that our county exec and staff can figure out a way to make this happen with the Sheriff's Department. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, very good. Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I cheekily just chimed in, because I wanted to say "fat rabbit" on the record as well.
Is that spelled with a P H or an F?
F.
Okay.
Yeah, they're right in the historic district.
No, no degrees with P Hs in them. But I will say that I back up Supervisor Desmond on his request there. And I know that the county exec and I had a conversation about this, and I think it's a classification issue as far as the ripple effects. But I do support the sheriff's underlying request, and I hope that we can find that out. And I hope to see some people out there for National Night Out tonight. Thank you.
Very good. I will complete our comments by also referencing National Night Out. And as is customary for the First District, we host an event at Jack Davis Park, which is in the South Oak Park community, one that our staff and myself, we were very familiar with and focused a lot of our attention on, would certainly welcome. And anyone who would like to come by it and visit, it's always a well-attended part of National Night Out in that part of Sacramento County. We always have a number of departmental tables out there and staff providing information. And we also have a number of our nonprofit partners that attend as well. And my Chief of Staff just reminded me via text that we're actually going to have a couple of food trucks out there tonight, one of which is papu saria, which is Salvadorian food. And I am a sucker for a good papu sa, so I'm looking forward to that. Got a break from the diet at some point, I suppose. So that's something that we're all looking forward to. I know others are out trying to attend many of the events that are going on throughout their respective districts, but I always want to make sure that my colleagues and staff know that they're always very invited, very much invited to the event that we host. And then secondly, I just want to publicly thank Vice Chair Rodriguez and Deputy County Exec Siobhan Qatari, as well as our County Executive David Villanueva. We have been participating with the city of Sacramento to button up the agenda for the October 28 joint meeting involving the City of Sacramento City Council and then, of course, the mayors from the other cities in Sacramento County. And the comments and suggestions have been wonderful. I think it's really added a lot to making this a very, what I think will be a very productive meeting on the subject of homelessness, homeless services, affordable housing, and the complexities of that. And I think it's been great, especially to have Vice Chair Rodriguez involved, because she's been able to, I think, interject at the right moments to remind everyone that while this kind of started as a city of Sacramento, county of Sacramento effort, there definitely needs to be a lot of consideration for the other cities' perspectives and what they can contribute to make this, again, I think, not just a productive but a historic joint meeting. So very much looking forward to that. And I just want to extend my thanks to those that I've mentioned. Okay, if there are no further comments from board members or staff or the public, we are adjourned.